Good evening, welcome to the Marquette City Commission meeting for Monday, July 9th, 2012. Could you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, City Clerk, could you please call roll?
Yes, Your Honor, Mayor Protem de Petro.
Here.
Commissioner Neme.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Commissioner Stenang. Commissioner Snyder.
Here.
Commissioner Stonehouse.
Here.
And Mayor Kivala.
Here. Commissioners, Commissioner Stenang is out of town, unable to make the meeting. Commissioner Neme?
Thank You, Your Honor, I'll move that we excuse the absence of Commissioner Stenang.
All right.
Yes, Stenang.
And support by Commissioner De Petro, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries, any changes to the agenda tonight? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to approve. Commissioner Ryan?
Move the agenda be approved.
With support. Commissioner Schneider supports. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? All right, announcements. I'm going to read through the current openings on the volunteer boards and committees. We are making a little bit of progress, it seems, but we still got a handful. Arts and Culture Advisory Committee has one opening. The Investment Advisory Board has one opening. The Local Officers Compensation Commission has four openings. Parks and Rec Advisory Board, three openings. Planning Commission, one opening. The Regional Rec Authority Business Plan Ad Hoc Committee, one opening and one alternate opening. Sister City Advisory Committee, two openings, and the Traffic Parking Advisory Committee has one opening. So if, again, if you have any interest in that, you can go to the city website, www.mqtcty.org. You can stop at the city manager's office, or you can pester any of your fellow commissioners and we'll get you the information you need. So with that, we're going to move into our first agenda item, and I'm going to ask Susan Bohr to please meet me at the lectern. We're here to give you a certificate of appreciation for your tenures of service to the city of Marquette. Thank you for hard work and dedication in serving the citizens of this community. And you wear many hats here. You've been from HR to Director of Administration now, and we appreciate all the hard work, so.
Thank you.
Have any speeches you want to make?
No.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much, it's really gone quickly, and thank you for letting me be a part of the team. This is a great community.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, next up, our very own City Clerk Dave Blue has a brief presentation on elections board reports, so. Is it, is it going to be just like your last one?
Yes, it will.
Perfect.
Mayor Commissioners, thank you again for the opportunity to present information on one of our boards and committees. Tonight, I'll be presenting information on our election board. The election board is made up of five members, Don Elzinga, Martha Fotopoulos, Bill Recshon, Crystal Swanson, and myself as the clerk and chair, and we have Deputy City Clerk Chris Hazer as our liaison. This body is authorized by Charter Section 3.10 and State Law Election Code, Act 116 of 1954, as amended. This group represents the citizens of the city of Marquette and meets prior to elections in order to certify candidates for elections, such as commissioners to the city commission and the Board of Light and Power, also appoints election inspectors prior to each election, and we also conduct public accuracy tests as required under the law for all of our state election equipment. Upcoming meetings, I posted one here, I guess I did this report prior to tonight, I have it listed as June 28th. We did meet on the 28th to appoint election inspectors for the August primary. On August 1st, we will meet to conduct that public accuracy test of the city election equipment for the primary. And on the 27th of September, we'll be back to appoint election inspectors for the November general or presidential election, and on October 31st, we'll be back again to conduct those same public accuracy tests for our equipment prior to that election. And then November 28th, we'll hold our annual election, our annual meeting to set our calendar for 2013. That's about it for this group, unless there's questions.
Do you have any questions? I don't think so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. All right, next up is boards and committees. We have one appointment, Jessica Jones, Regional Rec Authority Plan Ad Hoc Committee, term ending 12/31/13. Commissioner Schneider?
I'd like to motion that we approve Jessica Jones for the Regional Recreation Authority Plan Ad Hoc Committee for the term ending 12/31/13.
All right, do we have support? Commissioner Neme?
Thank You, Your Honor, I'll support the motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Schneider, any additional comments?
Only that we've set up two positions for this, as the other municipalities have, this is the second person, so hopefully we can get moving with the ad hoc committee and get some good work done.
Thank you, Commissioner Neme?
I'd just like to thank Ms. Jones for being willing to serve the city on this. It's a very important committee, it's a short-lived committee, hopefully, and hopefully we'll reach a good result.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is public comment. Comments may not exceed three minutes per person, citizens may reserve time to speak on agenda items. This may result in the item being moved up on the agenda at the mayor's discretion. Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing no one, we will then move to number four, our consent agenda. City Clerk, do you want to read the items on the consent agenda?
Yes, Your Honor, Item A, approve the minutes of the June 28th special commission meeting. Item B, approve the total bills payable in the amount of $467,137.11. And Item C, approve the resolution in support of Michigan Recreation and Parks Association grant proposal, building the case for local parks and recreation in Michigan.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Move to, or motion rather, to approve the consent agenda as read.
Thank you, and Commissioner De Petro supports. Any comments, Commissioner Stonehouse?
None.
Commissioner De Petro?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Seeing no other comments, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, under new business, number five, report and recommendation from the city manager regarding parking lot agreement. City Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor, background, the Block 500 Partnership LLC entered into a parking lot agreement with the city of Marquette in 2001. The agreement is attached. Pursuant to the agreement, the city paid up to $69,000 toward the construction of the parking lot. Mr. Mark Canelli, one of the members of the LLC, is endeavoring to add an additional 1,800 square feet to his building, and in order to do so, he needs to remove three of the 46 public parking spaces created through the agreement. If approved, the parking lot would consist of 43 public parking spaces. The other two members of the LLC, per their attached letter, have approved Mr. Canelli's request. The original agreement contains a formula for repaying the city for its construction costs upon termination of the agreement prior to the expiration date. Using that formula, the city assessor has calculated the repayment cost for removing the three spaces to be $1,262.37, which some Mr. Canelli would be required to pay, required to pay the city per the attached addendum to the parking lot agreement as prepared by the city attorney. Fiscal effect, the city would realize a one-time payment of $1,262.37, as well as a potential increase in taxable value of the subject property. Recommendation, approve an addendum to the parking lot agreement between the city and Block 500 Partnership LLC. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
All right, thank you. For the record, Mr. Canelli is here as well, if we had questions, we could probably call him up. Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Commissioner Stonehouse?
I motion to approve an addendum to the parking lot agreement between the city and Block 500 Partnership LLC.
Thank you. Do we have Commissioner Schneider? Support? Commissioner Stonehouse, any comments?
No further comments.
Commissioner Schneider?
None.
All right, any other comments? All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, number six, report and recommendation from the mayor. City manager's annual evaluation and compensation adjustment. City Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor, background, your city manager contract committee, consisting of Mayor Protem de Petro and Commissioners Stonehouse and Snyder, met to review the evaluations completed by all commissioners. In addition, the committee reviewed the manager's contract terms and compensation. The city, or city manager Vida completed his second year of service with the city of Marquette as of May 10th, 2012. Our contract with the city manager provides that each June, we will evaluate his performance. The committee recommends changing his performance evaluation date to January 15th, beginning January of 2013. His current contract runs through June 30th, 2014. The committee also recommends extending his contract another 18 months to January 15th, 2016. The overall evaluation was very positive, the manager rated very good to outstanding in most categories. Commissioner, comments and suggestions have been provided to the city manager for further improvement. In reviewing compensation, we took into account comparable local positions, other municipalities, the level of salary at which we started the manager, and the progress of the city in the past year. We think the current adjustment with another evaluation in January is appropriate based upon our review. Fiscal effect, the manager's current salary is $113,300. The recommended increase of 2.5% is within, is well within the budget for fiscal year 2012-13. Recommendation, approve the city manager contract committee's recommendation to increase the city manager's salary 2.5% to $116,133, effective July 1, 2012. Extend the manager's contract 18 months to January 15th, 2016, and change his performance evaluation date to January 15th of each year. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
All right, Commissioners? Nobody wants to touch this one? Sorry, Bill. Commissioner Neme?
Thank You, Your Honor. I move that we approve the city manager contract committee's recommendation to increase the city manager's salary 2.5% to $116,133, effective July 1, 2012. Extend the manager's contract date months to January 15th, 2016, and change the performance evaluation date to January 15th of each year.
All right, do we have support? Commissioner Stonehouse?
I will support that recommendation, or that motion.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Neme, anything to add?
Well, I think the committee has done a very good job. I like the idea of the evaluation in January, that way we're able to make a provision in the budget without the awkward requirement of the manager making a provision for his own salary in the budget, which is kind of an awkward thing, and I'd also like to commend the manager. The city's done some good things this year, and he's been the driving force behind it, and he's got a good staff, but a good leader is necessary for our city to move forward, and I've been pleased with his performance.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
I can only echo certainly Commissioner Neme's comments concerning the performance of the manager. I think we're just extremely lucky to have somebody of his caliber working for the city. It is extraordinary, I think, the amount of work he's doing, and especially the work that we often don't see him doing, as you might expect a more typical manager to do. I also think it was important that we kind of kick the contract off of that June 30 date and get it to that Jan 15 date, it just makes more sense with how the city, I think, is run and managed, so I look forward to seeing how well that works.
Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Ryan?
I would like to speak in support of the recommendation. I agree that the manager's done a good job, I think we made a good decision when we brought him to Marquette, brought him back to Marquette, and I think he's really made some positive steps for the city and deserves a very positive evaluation.
All right, thank you. Well, I will chime in as well. City manager Vida, you have done an exemplary job your time here in Marquette, and the citizens of the city are very fortunate to have you back home, so. You know, a lot of people don't see what we are privy to see in the way that you've restructured city government to make it more efficient and more effective. The little things that you've done, like the community office hours to engage the community, the open house that we have every year to get people involved, the 24-hour response time on issues that I know some of the department heads might not care for it sometimes because it's a little daunting, but you really see the fact that your job and our job is to work for the people, and so I humbly appreciate that and thank you for your service. So if no other questions, I will call, or comments, we'll call a question, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, next up is report and recommendation from the city manager, it's regarding the settlement of the Peterson litigation. For this, we need to move to closed session. Do we want to read the background first, or City Clerk?
Thank You, Your Honor, background, Gerald Peterson left his position as city, as Marquette city manager in July of 2005 and received retiree health insurance premium benefits under a city plan until July of 2006. At that time, the city determined that changes had been made in the retiree insurance plan by Mr. Peterson during his term as city manager, which resulted in former employees receiving benefits, although they did not meet the prior minimum qualification. This included Mr. Peterson, and insurance payments made on his behalf were terminated. He failed, or filed a civil action to obtain restoration of the payment of his insurance benefits and damages. Marquette County Circuit Court Judge Thomas Solka agreed with the city that he was not entitled to retiree health insurance benefits and dismissed the case. Mr. Peterson then appealed the decision in an opinion dated August 9th, 2011. The Michigan Court of Appeals reversed the decision of Judge Solka and ordered reinstatement of Mr. Peterson to the city's retiree health insurance plan and remanded the case for a determination of damages. Facilitative mediation conducted by retired Marquette Circuit Court Judge John R. Weber on June 29th, 2012 resulted in settlement of Mr. Peterson's claim against the city, subject to city commission approval. Recommendation, approve the settlement of the Peterson litigation in accordance with the agreement reached by the parties at the facilitative mediation held on June 29th, 2012. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
Pursuant to MCL 15.2680, I move we go into closed session to consult with our attorney regarding this matter.
Okay, and also for strategy session?
With regard to the city's current labor negotiations.
Okay, thank you. Do we have support?
Support.
Commissioner De Petro supports. All in favor say yes.
Roll call.
Yes, oh, roll call vote.
Commissioner, Mayor Protem de Petro?
Yes.
Commissioner Neme?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse? And Mayor Kivala.
Yes. All right, we're now in closed session. All right, we're now in closed session.
Johnny, you're always a gentleman. I do it for the team.
Okay, we're back in open session from our discussion in closed session. Commissioners, Commissioner Neme?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a motion regarding the Gerald Peterson case. I move that the Commission approve the settlement of the claims of Gerald R. Peterson for reinstatement as soon as practicable under the city's current medical insurance plan for retired department heads with 15 years of service who retired prior to September 2006 and for $82,500 money damages in accordance with the agreement reached by the parties at facilitative mediation conducted by retired Circuit Judge John R. Weber on June 29, 2012, and direct the city attorney to draft settlement documents consistent with the terms of the parties' agreement and authorize the city manager to sign such documents on behalf of the city.
All right, we have a motion. Commissioner Ryan?
I'll support the motion.
All right, thank you. Discussion, Commissioner Neme?
Well, I think we, you know, we've got a good settlement. It was a long time in coming. The appeals court required that we reinstate him on the medical insurance and we negotiated the settlement of the damages, so I think it's a good settlement for the city to settle this matter.
Commissioner Ryan?
I think it's good to emphasize what Commissioner Neme just said, that this decision was really made by the Michigan Court of Appeals. The city had the option of perhaps taking it to the Supreme Court, which is a very difficult thing to do, and so the appeals court really made this decision as far as the reinstatement goes, and we met and mediated, as Commissioner Neme mentioned in his motion, and this was a number that could be agreed upon between the parties.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Well, you know, I'll weigh in a little bit. You know, this is a tough pill for any of us sitting up here to swallow. It's a significant amount of money that the taxpayers are paying to a man who really left quite a mess here, and here it is seven years later, and we're cleaning up the last of it. For someone to be able to give themselves the ability to have health care, you know, through the rest of their life and do that without Commission approval, it's sad to see. I'm happy it's done. I want to thank the two Commissioners, Commissioner Neme and Commissioner Ryan, that worked on this mediation. I know it was a lovely seven-hour Friday that you gave up to do this, and I thank you for that. The legal staff that's worked for seven years on this case, I want to thank them as well. But it is, it's time to move forward. This is the last chapter in that, or I guess the last page in that ugly chapter in the city's history, and now, seven years later, we can say we're done, so. With no other questions, I'll call the question all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number two, public comment. Comments should be limited to five minutes per person. Anyone wishing to comment? Okay, if you could stand at the lectern and give your name and address for the record.
Hello, representatives of the citizens of Marquette. My name is Heidi Gould, and I live at 419 North 4th Street here in Marquette, and I am, as I said, a citizen of the city of Marquette. I do not own a vehicle. I enjoy walking the streets of Marquette to take my children to the Y or to the library or anywhere in town that we need to go. What I don't enjoy is picking up garbage. Although we do live in a very beautiful and clean city, there is some room for improvement. What I would like to see, if at all possible, is an increase in garbage receptacles in key areas around town, but more importantly, recycling receptacles along with that. In Lower Harbor Park, there are a number of garbage receptacles, and I would like to see, coupled with that, recycling receptacles for plastic water bottles, which I would actually ideally see banned, but also aluminum cans, beverage containers, and other such items that are recyclable. I'd like to see more receptacles for such things, as well as garbage receptacles along Fair Street on the way to the YMCA on not every corner of town, but on more corners. It doesn't happen very often, but often enough that I would like to see it addressed. Garbage on the side of the road, soda pop cans, which are recyclable, or cups and a pair of socks that I picked up and threw away, and my 16-year-old looked at me, "Why did you have to touch those?" Because I was compelled to, because the city of Marquette is so beautiful. I would like to see it stay that way, and like I said, there is some room for improvement on that issue. Another part of that, which I myself need to learn more about, but I would like to learn and see other cities when I've driven in, I've seen, you know, a fine for littering. If we don't already have that, that might be a deterrent for some people, you know, to have a significant fine for littering, signs posted may be a deterrent. So the garbage receptacles, recycling receptacles, and possibly a fine for littering. When we add the garbage receptacles and recycling receptacles to help defer some of the cost of doing that, like you see adopt-a-highway signs where people go and clean up the highway, but they are noted for that section, when we add garbage receptacles along with recycling receptacles, maybe caring concerned citizens could pay for the installation of such and have a note put on, you know, that in memory of, or thanks to, or that would defer some of the cost of the installation of the receptacles. So that is my issue for this evening, and I appreciate your time for listening. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you, Heidi. Anyone else wishing to address the Commission? All right, seeing none, we will move... Oh, okay.
Hello, my name is Lauren Nagel. I am a resident of Marquette. I live at 414 North Front Street. I'm just having a public comment to encourage all of you guys to just relax and come to Water Palooza July 15 and celebrate the Great Lakes. The Save the Wild U.P. office partnered with the Students for Sustainable Living is putting on Water Palooza. It'll start at 11:00 on July 15, and we'll have music, a water slide, and a KBC Beer Garden, along with a lot of wonderful information supporting the Great Lakes and kitsugumi here in Marquette. So we encourage all of you and your friends and family to come out. It's just a great way to honor and show respect for the water that gives us life here in Marquette. So, yeah, that's my public comment.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, seeing none, we will move to comments by City Commissioners. Commissioner Neme?
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess I just want to ask the manager a question regarding the young lady's suggestion on additional rubbish collectors. I think we could put rubbish collectors out there, but her, I like her suggestion about including recyclables, but do we really recycle, or does do the recyclables that people separate go into the landfill, or does it, is it a combination of the two? When the market's up, they recycle? When the market's down, they discard?
I'll certainly follow up with Mr. Aho and get a definitive answer for that. It's my understanding it depends on the type of recyclable, what is actually getting recycled currently or not, but we'll certainly get an answer back.
And I guess I'd just like encourage our staff, when that contract comes up, maybe if we could assure more recycling, because perhaps it's going to cost us a little more, but I think it's, in the long run, it's well worth it. And the extra garbage containers, if there is a way we can keep them from not being dumped over very easily, maybe chain them or put a big steel spike in the ground or something. Scott could probably come up with some sort of idea to minimize the litter from the containers.
Thank you, Your Honor, absolutely. We'll look into all those suggestions. That's certainly something we've been focused on in the past, and part of the challenge has been how well we can coordinate with the surrounding communities, because, of course, we have 20 partners in the Solid Waste Landfill Authority. There's power in numbers. The investment everybody is placing on more recyclability, and the type of equipment it's going to take to handle that within each of the municipalities is something that we're looking at with our partners, but we're very actively trying to find a solution for this, and so hopefully we'll have some very good things to come back and report.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Snyder?
No comments this evening.
Thank you. Commissioner DePietro?
Thank you, Your Honor. I've got some employee service anniversaries for this month, starting off with Charles Paul, wastewater treatment plant operator. On July 6, he'll have 30 years of service there. Mark Randall is a special equipment operator at Department of Public Works, and July 1, he enjoyed his 25th anniversary. Jeff Weston, he's a captain at the Market Fire Department, and July 6, he had his 25 years of service. And Bruce Gauthier, utility inspector, on July 17, coming up in a few more days, will have 20 years. And Don Doc Trizona, well, he's a heavy equipment operator at Public Works. And July 20, he'll have 20 years of service. And our Susan Bullhor, that's here tonight, is our Director of Administrative Service. And July 8, she had her 10 years of service. Jared Kangus, engineering aid inspector, on July 23, will have five years of service. And Wendy Larson, our executive assistant to the city manager, on July 4 has her first year. And I'd like, at the end of this meeting, I had the city manager announce when the next community office hours, date and location will be. Thank you very much, Your Honor.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
Yeah, I would just like to thank those who worked on the Fourth of July celebration in Marquette. Obviously, we had a little debate this year about the fireworks and whether it was a good idea or not a good idea to fire them off on the Fourth, but I'm not going to get involved in that. What I would say is that, as always, a lot of people work to make the Fourth of July a special day in Marquette, and I think that's a very good thing. And they're not city employees, they're not city people, they're volunteers who work in our community. I can recall in communities, well, throughout Market County, when the Fourth of July was like kind of a dead Sunday, you know, it was not much going on, and that's, just the opposite is true now. A lot of things are going on in Marquette. It's really exciting between the Food Fest and the Fourth of July activities. It's a great, exciting time, so. As I've said many, many, many times, Marquette is a great place because people make it that way. The Fourth of July is special because there are a group of people who work on that, and I do want to thank them for their efforts.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Well, let me, if I can just spend a minute, let folks know that this Friday, about 4:00 PM, and we will have the tall ship, U.S. Brig Niagara, coming into Lower Harbor. And Niagara is the classic War of 1812 flagship for Commodore Perry. Part of that ship actually fought in the War of 1812. A small piece, they kept rebuilding it, but she technically still carries that. But she'll be coming into Lower Harbor under gunfire and mooring up at Matson Wall. She will be under private charter on Friday evening and on Saturday, but on Sunday, she'll be fully open to the public. And I would encourage folks to come on down. There'll be a small admission fee that will benefit the Maritime Museum, but to have an opportunity to tour literally the premier tall ship on the Great Lakes and be able to get under decks and really get down there and talk to a crew that is very proficient and professional on how they explain this very important part of American history. And this year is really, of course, the bicentennial of the War of 1812, and it'd be, I think, a very educational opportunity to go down and learn about the ship and the war. Nothing further. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I just want to give a quick shout-out to the Marquette Bike Jam. They had their event last week, and it was very successful. Got to watch quite a few of the races downtown, which was exciting to see them back. Hopefully, next year it grows and grows. The mountain bike racing was fantastic, so good first-year event, and I wish them the best. That's all I have tonight. City Manager?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd just like to thank the City Commission for your kind treatment this evening. I greatly, greatly appreciate it. Service to the city of Marquette is a privilege, and I know I don't need to share that with this body, but it's something that I sincerely believe and look forward to every morning. Pursuant to the Mayor Pro Tem's request, our next community office hours are going to be Wednesday, 10:00 to 12:00, at Peter White Public Library. It's July 11, so two days away, and I'll look forward to hearing from everybody about any issues they'd like to speak about that can help improve the city.
All right, thank you. With that, we're adjourned.